Alrighty, well, it's seven o'clock. So the school board welcomes you to this evening's meeting. This is a meeting of the school board held in public and not a public meeting. The school board will allow expressions of public comment on actionable school board agenda items, adhering to the guidelines established by the school board as it aligns with Indiana law. A person who wishes to address the school board on actionable items should have completed the appropriate form with all request information and submitted it to the school resource officer at least five minutes before the start of the meeting. And for patrons wishing to speak on non-actionable items, please contact Mr. Ramey and ask to be placed on the agenda of the next regularly scheduled board meeting. All requests must be received by the Wednesday prior to the school board meeting. So again, welcome. Thank you all for making it and we'll stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, Lord, we give you praise today. Would we thank you for the gifts that you've given us? And would we pray for another successful school year? And we ask that you watch over the students, the teachers, the administration. Would we thank you for the love that you've given us, especially through your son, Jesus Christ? And because of his sacrifice on the cross and the resurrection of his body, Lord, that we know one day we could spend eternity with you as long as we give our faith and trust to you. We ask that you be with this meeting and just pray that we can glorify you in every way. In the name of your son's name, we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Phil. Alrighty, well, again, welcome everyone. And we'll get things started here with the minutes. And I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes up to July 21st, 2025 school board meeting.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? And all those in favor? Thank you. We normally would go into presentations and recognition. We had a couple of folks who had asked to present tonight. I don't see that they've signed in or that they're present tonight, so we'll move on. There are no special reports this evening, so we will move into the action items. And first up is personnel.
Yeah, I would recommend that you approve the personnel as presented.
Thank you. That's a list that we've been given in advance. And we have a recommendation for those personnel items. Is there a motion? So, thank you, Phil.
Second.
Thank you, Melissa. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor? Okay, thank you. We're moving right into the business side of things. And first is the prep period compensation item.
Yes, for the last several years, we've asked for your approval to compensate Amanda Trent for her prep period. So that puts her at seven period days with responsibility and duties. So I would, she'll be taking on additional duties and caseloads in the special ed department. And I would recommend that you approve that.
And that's, we've had the input with Mr. Miller as well.
Yep, and Madeline.
And Madeline, yeah, thank you. We have a recommendation. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Wait, Greg?
Second.
And thank you, Dennis. And as far as discussion goes, the only thing I'll point out that's kind of follows what we've done in the past, where it made sense, it's still a cost savings measure. It's somebody who's equipped to do the job. They're taking on additional responsibilities. And yeah, it seems to make sense from the top down. And all those in favor? Okay, awesome. Thank you. Also, compensation for special education is next.
Yeah, as you all know, Holly Butler serves as our registrar now. She was a licensed special ed teacher or is a licensed special ed teacher. So some of the administrative duties, we started last year her helping out to take the responsibility off the special ed teachers so they could focus more on addressing IEPs and staying on top of the case loads with those individual kids. There's some reports that need to be done that help with Amber over here. So it worked well last year. And with this being Madeline's first year out here, we're going to keep it the same way and then reevaluate it at the end of this year on whether or not it continues or if it's something that Madeline could take on. So I would recommend you approve that.
Excellent. We have a recommendation. Is there a motion?
Second.
Thank you, Melissa.
Second.
Thank you, Greg. Any questions or any discussion? And if there's not, all those in favor? Okay, thank you. Next, we've got a memorandum of understanding.
Yes, this is an outside service that's provided by a outside business, so to speak. So they send an individual in and help with a student in need. The student sees them outside of school hours as well. So it's kind of a win-win, kind of puts us all on the same page and all being consistent. But just to cover some of the liability and risks that might be there, we have a contract signed between the two parties, so it's clear on what's allowed and what's not allowed.
Okay, and so we've got a recommendation then to accept that memorandum of understanding. Is there a motion? Second. Thank you, Greg. Thank you, Phil. Any questions or any discussion? And if not, all those in favor? Okay. Next is joint services and the supply firm.
Yeah, this is our normal year-to-year contract with the West Central Career and Technical Education Co-op that we belong with three Montgomery County schools. It's a lot of just date changes. And then last year, there were a couple of positions that we had that were funded through some federal money and such. And one of the individuals resigned. And so we kind of said our Nicodemus has reevaluated and reconfigured her staff. So that's why some of those would have been marked out. But again, it's the same contract essentially that's been signed for the last several years.
Okay. So we have a recommendation for that the board approved the agreement with West Central Technical Education effective July 1, 2025. Is there a motion? So, Dennis, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Brian. Any questions? Any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, thank you. Next is board policy 1290, the community use of school facilities.
Yeah, there's just, we've had this discussion for the last several years. So this summer, members of the leadership team that deal with this on a more frequent basis and some of us sat down with some input from Dennis over the years about, and so there were some changes made. Couple of things that come to mind were the pools no longer listed as a rental just because of the liability there. We don't have anybody. This was back in the day when Dwayne Swisher would have been our kind of our aquatics director. We don't have an aquatics director. And so the pool was removed. They kind of lumped things into the bigger and smaller, so to speak. The cafeteria gym, auditorium, outdoor fields is one rate per hour. And then meeting rooms like classroom, community room, large group instruction, that's another rate. And then the other thing of note is that we just went a flat rate on the amount to pay for custodians. And that's $40 a flat rate if it's outside of their normal hours in a day. So those are the, those are the biggest changes to that.
Is that flat rate per hour? It's a flat rate?
It's a flat rate per hour.
Okay. So we've got a recommendation that the board approve the revised community use of school facilities. Is there a motion over?
So moved.
Thank you, Greg. Thank you, Brian. As far as discussion goes, do we, do we have any idea how many times our facilities get rented out in a, on an annual basis?
Five to 10 total maybe a year combined probably?
Yeah, I mean, like, we'll have groups, one of these, we used to have a county group want to use our community and then things like that where we don't charge them. Yeah, as far as, you know, there's not that many, but actually, so who's doing baseball training themselves?
We don't. We're doing that adult league instead. A lot of our, so it'd be used by athletic coaches, coaches of our athletic programs in which as long as there're been any, our athletes, we.
Yeah, the math league.
Yeah. I drove by the other day and saw it looks like some out-of-state band, marching band in color garb was at the Lebanon turf field doing some sort of performance.
Practice athletic ground court competition.
Yeah, it was this weekend down in Indy, yeah.
Okay, thank you for the input on that. Any other questions or discussion? So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Thank you. Next is the 2026 budget and the request to advertise.
Yeah, so this part of the budget process is quicker than the other meetings. This is just where you give me the approval to post the basics of the budget to Gateway. And I gave you in front of your stations here what that advertisement looks like. And it's a notice to tax base, and it just gives them the, the estimates for the budget, which would be the appropriations, and then also the estimates for the, for the tax levies. Rainy day education operations are just what we talked about last month. So those numbers are all the same. There's no changes there. The debt service fund, I put a higher number in there just to kind of cover ourselves in case the assessed value were to grow. So I baked in a little bit higher payment, and that's through the common school fund loan. We can pay that off in one year instead of over five years. Just to kind of, if the AV comes in high, it will allow us to protect the payment and the tax rate. It probably won't be that, but if we advertise high, we can always take it back down once we know what the AV is. We're still waiting on the certified assessed value. We don't know what that is yet, but, so that's the only thing that looks a little different than what you saw last month, and I wanted to point out why. And this, we can always reduce these numbers, but we can't ever go higher once it's advertised. So that's what I wanted to point out. You will, you now do see on this advertisement the property tax cap credit estimate. That used to be just a circuit breaker loss for us, which was like 15,000. And now we're looking at $470,000 in loss, and that's due to these new tax laws. So it's starting to get real once we start seeing on the official forms. But, so anyway, I would say probably at the end of this week or early next week, I would get this posted to Gateway. It has to be posted 10 days before our next board meeting, so that's the statutory requirement. I'll make sure and get it on there plenty of time, but. So that's, you're approving me to post this to Gateway, to our website, and then also the capital projects plan and the bus replacement plan to post those as well. And then at the public hearing meeting in September, we'll go through all of this for the public and allow their input if they so choose.
Thank you. So we've got a recommendation to approve the, we've got a recommendation that we approve the advertisement of this 2026 budget, the 2026 to 28 capital project plan, and the 2026 to 2030 bus replacement plan. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Dennis. Thank you, Melissa. Any other questions?
The AV should be sent out in September though, right?
Well, it's supposed to be sent, submitted by the county to the DLGF on August 1st. So it's just a process that kind of lags. I hope to have it before the end of this month, but definitely by the next board meeting, fingers crossed, so.
And kind of that 300 to 600,000, what we had back this spring, this is kind of the, kind of the number now, the 470,000.
And that's, again, that's an estimate too, but at least they're starting to.
It's a lot closer than 300 to 600.
Right. We're starting to get an idea about what it looks like, so. Yeah.
So we've got a motion and a second. Any other questions or discussion? And if not, all those in favor for the advertisement? Okay, thank you. Next are the appropriation reduction.
This is another, this is another piece of the budget process, and I do it earlier than all of the other forms because if I get to the point in the budgeting process where it looks like we're not going to have enough money, funds, revenue, cash balance to cover the appropriation, we can use some of this year's appropriation to cover that. We've never had to actually do it, but now that we're starting to lose a little bit of forecasted revenue, I like to have that in our back pocket. So essentially, this resolution, you're giving Mr. Ramey the authority with this resolution to reduce an appropriation for the 2025 budget year to use then for the 2026 budget year, if we would need to do that. And there's a form that he would fill out, we would submit to the DLGF, but this just gives him that authority if we, if we need it.
So we've got a recommendation that the board approve the resolution granting Mr. Ramey the authority to reduce the 2025 appropriations for the 2026 budget. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Dennis.
Second.
Thank you, Brian. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor? Okay. Next are the non-resident students.
Yeah, I always like to see these. I recommend you approve the following. Skylar Henry, Granville Wells pre-K. These are all for this school year. Dawson Drake, Granville Wells kindergarten. Delaney Drake, Granville Wells third grade. Camden Goss, Granville Wells fifth grade. Olivia Murphy, Thorntown pre-K. Makoa Smith, Thorntown kindergarten. Camilla Smith, Thorntown second grade. Kaylin Barrett, Thorntown fourth grade. Paisley Hall, Thorntown sixth grade. Evan Dexter, Western Boone seventh grade. Soren Bandy, Western Boone ninth grade. Alexis Paynton, Western Boone tenth grade. Madeline Wellington, Western Boone eleventh grade. And Alicia Wilson, Western Boone eleventh grade. Those have all been reviewed and approved by each of the building principals.
Excellent. We have a recommendation the board approve those following non-resident, or those non-resident students. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Greg. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dennis. Any questions, discussion?
Well, I just want to put in a minute, it's about time Dexter brought the kid over here.
All those in favor? Thank you. Next is the inter-district transfers.
Yeah, we have one. Eliza Click, Thorntown kindergarten, from Granville Wells. So I recommend you approve that.
We have a recommendation. Is there a motion?
Second.
Thank you, Melissa. Thank you, Phil. Any questions? All those in favor? Next, donations.
Yeah, I have a list here. Student activities received. This is a Western Boone, a 1,211.47 cent donation from Boone County Emergency Management. That was money that was left over from a program that they used to run on like a four-year basis. No longer doing that, so they split the money between the two county schools. Then, that always had that, it was called every 15 minutes. FFA received a $150 donation from Venus Trucking. FFA, $150 donation from Myers Ag Solutions. FFA, $150 from Dover Christian Church. FFA, $150 from Leadenan Driver's Ed, Leadenan Driver Education, I'm sorry. FFA received a $375 donation from White River Golden Retriever Club Incorporated. And then high school volleyball received a $500 donation from Seven M's Leadenan IGA. And then Western Boone Athletics for the Gym Wall sponsorship, State Bank 1500. Got Ag 1500, and Ask Craft and One Orthodontics 1500. I'd like to thank all those that are supporting our students. It's very much appreciated, and I recommend that you approve those.
We have a recommendation that we approve those donations. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Dennis.
Second.
Thank you, Greg. Any questions or discussion? Okay, all those in favor? That's one of the more fun items we're going to do. Next are the out-of-state and overnight field trips.
F2, Jennifer Brownie, Ecuador and Galapagos Islands, June of 2027. That's seven years after the first homeless plan. Like, goes back to COVID time and ended up having to cancel that. So great to see that. We're going to give it another shot. Be a great experience for our kids. Always appreciate what Jen does with our kids. When you tell people from other schools where our kids are able to experience, they're always amazed. So thank you, Mrs. Brownie. And then Todd Smith with FFA, Schreifauger, for a, I think it's a leadership conference, if I remember right, from August 22nd to August 24th. So I would recommend you approve those two field trips.
We have a recommendation to approve those. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Melissa. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Brian. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor? Okay, thanks. Moving next to claims.
Claims, we have two to mention tonight. One was an ACH payment on July 25th to Michael's Pro Painting. That's Mike Stout, who painted some of our offices here and also did the new wall coverings that you see down the hallways and out in the main area. And that was for a total of $15,560. And then the other one was check number 95900 made payable to Sound of Music for $22,491.96. And that was for all of the work done in here to set this room up to stream. The board meetings is required by Indiana code. And Andrew, if you're watching, hi and thank you. He was one of our two or three viewers last month. He and his team did the work, so.
Okay. I would entertain a motion to approve the claims for the July 21st, 2025 through August 11th, 2025. Then as submitted, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Melissa. Any questions? If there are none, all those in favor? Okay, and next are the monthly financial reports.
At the end of July, the education fund cash balance was $5,649,000, $78. The education fund expenditures for July were $765,984. And as of the end of July, a total of 51% of the 2025 education fund appropriation was expended. For the operations fund, the cash balance at the end of July was $4,286,570. And expenditures for July was $377,311. And as of the end of July 2025, a total of 46% of the 2025 operations appropriation was expended. Western Boone County Community School Corporation has investments in forms of various interest-bearing accounts, deposits, and treasuries with financial institutions, and has earned interest year-to-date as follows. Home National Bank, $303,857.62 in interest. Raymond James, $4,332.50 in income, and $7,255.29 change of value. And North Salem State Bank, $45,348.25 in interest. That is all.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next category, other.
Yeah, we have a few that we're adding here that I shared with you this afternoon. So this is under personnel. At Granville Wells, Michael Baker, employment custodian effective August 13th. Thorntown, Marilyn Kirchvoll, employment special ed instructional assistant effective August 14th. At Western Boone, Eddie Cook, retirement maintenance technician effective July 30th, 2025. We miss Eddie. We wish him the best and appreciate all that he's done for the school corporation in Granville Wells. He spent a number of years down there. And then Bobby Stout, resignation custodian effective July 31st. So that's under personnel. And then, and then we have memorandum of understanding similar to the one with piece by piece. This is with New Beginnings Behavior Intervention Services, same, same type of service. So I would recommend that you approve those items under other.
Thank you. We have a recommendation for both the personnel and the MOU. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Brian. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Melissa. Any questions, any discussion? If there isn't any, all those in favor? Thank you. And announcements?
Yeah, I have a few items. I've jotted down. First and foremost, we have everybody from the leadership team out here. I appreciate all their efforts and as well as their staff. It's been, it's been a great start to the school year. And that's a result of the leadership team and the staff working hard together to provide a great experience for our students. Another celebration was the band made it back to the top 16, what, two, week and a half ago at the band day at the fair. 13th, 13th place, the top 16 go back on that Friday night, and they got 13th place. So it's great to continue to see what Mrs. Baker's doing with the band program. And then just a couple of things, put on your calendar. August 22nd, be the first home football game against Tri-West, the WBEF Pork Burger fundraiser. August 26th is something we've been doing for like the last four or five years, and that's the Senior Olympics. They do that out here. The senior services has a kind of Olympics out there. They do some running and throwing and jumping events. And if teachers want to bring kids out to cheer on those athletes, then they're always welcome to. So it's kind of neat to see how they interact and cheer them on. And then Labor Day will be here before you know it, September 1st, and we will not be in school that day. So that's all I have in regards to any kind of announcements.
Fair enough. Come on out on the 21st of August. Come on out on the 21st of August and watch the girls soccer.
There you go. There you go.
Alumni match went well, so.
All sports are well into their, what, second week? And battling the weather. So we'd like to see that break here in the near future, but I don't think it is this week anyways.
Simulator's up and running.
Simulator's up and running. Girls golf is using it, right?
Tennis courts are getting utilized?
Yeah, tennis courts we're dealing with, so corrections that need to be made. But they have at their disposal seven right now. They'll have seven for the next probably week. And then they'll have, they'll always have, then they'll have eight. And hopefully by the end of the month, first of September, we'll have all the corrections completed and things will be going well on the tennis courts.
Have the tennis players or coaches, I mean, play like the surfers, I mean, they like it?
Getting positive feedback from that?
Yeah, I have. I was out there today with them, cutting them.
Anything else for the good of the cause?
Auditorium is completed for, except for a couple of motors on, to bring up and down some lights. And then the, they're still working on the controls for the HVAC and the lighting and all that. So that's been a process and that'll go till October. But the auditorium for the most part is done. We're working, Kyle's asked for a meeting. We don't like how the speakers were hung over the front of the auditorium. They kind of hang down, they don't look the best. So we're looking to see if we have other options with those. But nonetheless, it still will be a quality sound for anybody that's there watching our kids perform. There'll be new mics and it's well overdue on that, so money well spent.
Anything else for the good of the cause? If there's not, then I would accept the motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Thank you, Dennis. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Melissa. All those in favor? All right. Again, thank you all for making it tonight, I appreciate it.